So we'll call to order committee of the whole administration and finance, public works, environmental services and facilities. That's a multiple for Monday, November 12th. Call for motion to approve the agenda.
So.
And a secondary?
I'm a secondary.
And all in favor? All opposed? That's carried. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures this evening? Councilor Ralph?
Yes, I have one. Seven J, say I'll drain it in your report. I'll be accusing, excusing myself. That's my brother-in-law. Maybe he's a little more than that.
And you'll just need to file the disclosure.
Yes.
Have you already filed?
I have not done so, but the deputy director's thread.
Okay. And nothing from the mayor or deputy mayor? Gentlemen?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. Oh, and so I should note that though this meeting falls on the, what would regularly be our administration and finance committee of the whole, the mayor has allowed me as the public works, environmental services and facilities committee chair to chair this meeting because it will be my last committee of the whole on council. So thank you very much, your worship, for giving me one last thrill. So...
One last chance to drive the bus.
That's right. So business arising from the previous administration and finance or public works, environmental services and facilities committee minutes. Any business arising? Go ahead.
Okay, so I have a question on page two of five. So I guess that would have been the public works meeting. And I wrote it, that was two of five. It was shared in Canada with their south tower on Hen's Road. I'm just wondering if there's been any kind of follow-up to that call through the chair.
MCAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, we have heard nothing further from shared network or from the property owner.
Okay. I guess we can pretty well call that one a gone-away issue. Okay, that was my question there. And then on page two of five as well, Ken.
Go ahead.
I just was wanting if we could get a little update on Walker Street project. I know that we get the, I get the, we get the updates at the Capitol reports, but because we're getting close to the end of construction season now, I wonder if we could get the director of operations kind of a status report where they are today.
Okay. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can report that on Friday, the first section of the road from Camry Road Two to Helen Street was paved with the first lift of asphalt. Tomorrow, the second section, the water and sewer should be tied in completely at that point. Next Tuesday, right now it's scheduled for the curb to go down on the final section. And weather permitting, we're hoping to have the first lift on the second section from Helen Street to Gill Street completed by the end of November.
So all of the subterranean work is complete now? Right to the end of the project?
All of it should be complete by the end of this week.
By the end of this week.
So I have a follow-up question on that. So the weather on Friday, you said, was when the first lift was laid on the first section?
Correct.
Weather was poor. It was like sub-zero and there was precipitation, just for my personal education. Does that, does that impact the quality of the surface going forward?
So potentially, the temperature is usually about one degree for that base lift to go down.
Okay.
At the time of the paving, it was one to two degrees.
Okay.
When it went down. Unfortunately, I'm not sure when the precipitation started in comparison to when they finished.
But it cures pretty quickly.
It does.
Okay. Go ahead.
So David, I believe it was the last meeting, we talked about an extension to next spring. Does this mean that we're almost to the finish point?
Through the chair, the second lift of asphalt and the landscaping will need to extend into the spring of next year in order to get a quality finished product.
I think this is wonderful, wonderful news. Thank you. Good. Thank you.
Go ahead.
We have one more question through the chair of the cabinet. And I understand the kind of pushing the envelope here right now to get the basics done, but will they be attempting to do any of the finished landscaping from the private properties to the curb this fall or is that all wait until next spring? And I'm talking about the finished landscape between the private property and the curb, edge of the curb.
So through the chair, we're going to just leave that as kind of a rough grade landscaping over the winter before we put the final topsoil and seeding on in the spring. It's just not, it's not going to take at this time of year.
It's, go ahead, Chair. It's just that I had a call from somebody, can't remember who it was, and the complaint was that the drop between, apparently the sidewalk went out from the house and then the drop from the end of the sidewalk where it had been taken up down to the curb or the roadway was going to be quite significant. And they were asking, would their sidewalk be sort of late to a reasonable ramp type rather than just left suspended?
So through the chair, I believe that's the same location. We've spoken with the owners and they will complete that sidewalk portion this winter or before the winter. It's just going to be the topsoiling, so that has been taken care of or will be if it hasn't already.
Okay. So any other business arising? We have no delegations of presentation this evening and nothing else on here, discussion items. So item seven is action and information items. So the first is the 2018 citizen of the year, and there is a recommendation. Is there a move for the recommendation? Deputy Mayor, are you moving?
Moving with the amendment.
Okay.
Just to throw the idea that there are always, there are two people who have always been hip-to-hip on this, and if that second name could be added, could they share the citizen of the year? Is that not in the past?
I'm sorry, with no nomination in front of us, we can't make a comment on that.
Okay.
We didn't receive that nomination.
So we rely on the nomination form?
So there's no way to just, for a member of the party to add a second name? I don't want to say the name. I don't, because most people around the table might know they're involved.
Right, but no...
Yeah, that's... Just a single one person in over the other, that's...
Yeah, the second sheet isn't circulated publicly at this point, right?
Only because, if I may, through the chair, only because sometimes the nominator wishes it to be a surprise to the nominate.
Yes.
Nominate person. I mean, it's not to kind of hide anything. It's just to try to make it more likely that we can have a surprise. But as I say, you know, the nominations have been well advertised, well posted, and we can't comment on a nomination we didn't receive.
I did, yeah. I mean, I'm quite happy with the choice. I just feel that there's always been, they've been like this. Possible.
So the chair's going to call for a mover for the recommendation again?
So...
Okay. Move by the deputy mayor, sir, a second?
Yes.
And a second. Okay. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I would just like to parrot Deputy Mayor Taylor's comments. It has always been a joint venture, shall we say. I would, and then I thought, well, maybe, maybe the nominating person discussed something and so I'm really torn on that, but I don't know. Is there...
I just don't, with the protocol, is...
...anything we can do?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
So eventually at the... So through the chair, eventually at the ceremony, the nominator's name is eventually brought forward. So it's not a reflection on the committee who receives the recognition. The recognition basically comes from the nominator. And for whatever reason, the nominator only recognized one person. I think that the, while it may very well be the intention of the nominator that this be a surprise type of thing, we might have a bug in the ear of the nominator that somehow or another, when the recognition is awarded, the person that's nominated chooses to share with a previous partner, if I can put it that way. I mean, it's not really up to us at this point, I would say, because this is the nomination we haven't got.
Yeah. And it does say, it's a singular, it's citizen, not citizens.
Yeah.
It is, it is the singular, so, but it, for as long as I've known, it's always been da-da-da-da.
Yeah, they're like the lobs in twins' wings.
Yeah.
All right, so without any more spoiler spoilers in store, anything else?
It's a good choice.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? And all opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. So the Ingredion Arena, Zamboni Room, overhead door, this is an information item, and Mr. Spencer, did you want to speak to that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've been having some problems at the arena in Cardinal with the overhead door. It's the one that goes from the ice into the Zamboni Room. The door was originally installed by Pipetec Doors back when the facility was constructed. And we've had them out a number of times to do some minor repairs, but this repair, what they have found are the springs that are up inside the enclosed cylinder have started to weaken, and it's just a matter of time before the door won't stay up or down. So they have recommended changing the door. We've looked at a door that is a little stronger and is, will be used, will be able to be used more often and more frequently as far as the openings and the closings of the door. As you can see, the one that was there was only rated for 2,000 openings, which we figured that it's already at about 4,000. We obviously didn't have funds set aside for that, but we did have some funding in our capital expenditures for the Spenceville Arena to replace the 50-horse compressor. Now that was put into place last year when we did our budget in October. And in March and April of this year, when Simco Refrigeration came to close the system down, we ran some more tests and they determined that we could get another year, potentially two years more off of that one because it's not the main compressor that's running all the time. We have a 50-horse and a 30-horse there. So we do have some funding available there, so the, in consultation with our treasurer, Melanie and Debbie, we decided to go ahead and order the door for the safety of our staff and for the general public. And we will take the fund, funding out of the capital money that we had set aside in Spenceville for the arena.
Okay. So Mr. Mayor, you got a question?
Well, through the chair, from the way I'm reading the briefing note, is that the cost of this replacement door is $10,000. So if it's $10,000, I believe that it meets the criteria of capital expenditure. Isn't our, isn't our, isn't our upset limit 5,000?
Correct.
So this is a capital item.
Correct.
Which means to me that we're basically approving a change to the capital budget. Now, I understand the way it's conceived to do it here, but that does really flag a change to the capital budget, which I think should be flagged in the briefing note as well. I'm prepared to accept the recommendation, but the briefing note kind of comes up short insofar as it doesn't really flag that as a change to the capital budget.
So just for clarification, this is not, yes, staff's not looking for our approval. They've gone and executed this.
I think they should have been.
This is for, this is for our information? No, but...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think they should have been.
Yep. Okay. Noted. And are there other, any other comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Through you. Thank you. Mike, I don't know a thing about doors, so you just have to bear with me if it's a stupid question, but why can't they just change the springs and put stronger springs in?
It's the, the spring mechanism, it's not the actual door that they're replacing. The actual door will still be there. It's the actual spring mechanism that, it goes up and it's an enclosed cylinder system.
Yes.
That's what's being replaced, not the actual door itself. The actual door itself, there's nothing wrong with that. It's the actual cylinder mechanism and the springs that are enclosed up at the top that are being replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
That's not clear either. Says the cost of the door.
Okay. So... Did you want the note amended before...
I'm prepared to let it go.
Okay.
It's just, I'm having trouble with the briefing note.
Yeah, I'm tracking.
It's an information item and so forth.
Okay. Councilor Ralph?
I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, no. That's it. I just wanted to make sure that there were, there were no more questions. Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Spencer. The next is a, oh, and sorry, just, I just wanted to follow up. So you said you ordered the door?
Correct.
Components and they're not installed?
Not yet. Six to eight weeks on the way.
Six to, and so six to eight weeks from order time, so when do you expect it to install?
Within the next two to three weeks.
Okay. And so, and it's, and it's functioning, the existing components are functioning based on the repairs done?
Yeah, if the door is left, like if the door is not completely open or completely closed, it will close on its own. So if it's halfway up, it will come down.
And is there any kind of protocol in place to prevent...
Staff are aware, staff know that the door is to remain up or down at all times.
Okay. Because sometimes they would just, you know, put it half up and scoot under maybe?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's...
That does not.
Right. So the next is seven C, and that's the recreation fee, recreation fee schedule update. And this has a recommendation as well. And that's that committee recommends that council repeal bylaw 2017-63 and pass a new bylaw to adopt the recreation fee schedule as attached. So I hope for a mover and a secondary to get on the table, and then we'll hear from Mr. Spencer on any questions. Is there a mover? Councilor Ralph, and is there a secondary? Mr. Packwood? Mr. Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As is the common practice that we have been doing, as far as updating our fee schedule, we put together this schedule. Upon reviewing, as indicated, speaking with other municipalities, the recreational fees for ice rentals, we feel a 2% increase for the prime time and non-prime time, as well as figure skating and spring ice rentals and summer ice rentals would be appropriate for the facilities for this year. Another note that I have indicated in here also, the one thing that we, when South Dakota minor hockey or user groups have hockey tournaments, we don't allow them to bring in food or drinks into the meeting room, which is something that Prescott has always done and other municipalities do. So what we have come up with for this year, there are people that want to rent our facilities now, especially the Ingredion. It happens periodically on a Friday night before the public skating, so they want to rent it for a birthday party celebration. So now we've indicated that, I feel, as well as our rec coordinator, that a hundred-dollar fee should be put in place for that. So right now, they're not allowed to bring anything in if the canteen is open. If the canteen is open, then I'm saying that they should be, there should be a charge for using the room for them to be able to bring in pizza, their cake, and their drinks. Because if we allow them to bring that sort of stuff in, and when there's tournaments and we allow the organizers of the tournaments to be bringing food in, then that's just cost and our funding that we're not getting out of the canteen. So that's another fee that we've added in this year. I've indicated that as in the last, last year and the year before, the public skating, the public swimming and the aquafit, that we remain that free of charge. We have certainly seen an increase in participation in the public swimming and the adult skating, or sorry, the public skating and the public swimming, as well as the aquafit over the last couple of years. And it certainly has been noted that it is free and it's certainly appreciated by the patrons that do use it. So I would continue to think that it would be recommended that we keep that free as well. One other fee that we're putting in, we do have a lot of arena advertising signs at both facilities, and we're just putting in a $50 surcharge fee to be included for any delinquent accounts, which would basically just kind of offset the cost of staff having to take the signs down and potentially put them back up if they decide to pay up on their bill. So page three is the actual fee schedule itself, and I'll just make note. It's effective for the minor hockey programs, this won't take effect until September of 2019, the start of their hockey season. March through, or sorry, January 1st through to the March 15th will be on the current contract that they're on right now. The summer rates and the spring rates will take effect on March the 15th. So it shows what the current rate is and then what the new rate will be for the various ice rates. The advertising rates, I feel, are competitive with other municipalities, and I feel that those fees should stay where they are. And the swimming program, we have left that as well where they are. We feel the numbers for the day camp were strong this year, and we feel that the fees were in line. Then at the very bottom is just the South Center and the Ball Diamond Rentals, and they will remain the same as they have been this past year. That's it, unless there's any questions?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, you got a question?
Well, I guess the question is kind of phrased this way. So in the second paragraph of the briefing note, there's a rationale to increase or to set a rate for the meeting rooms. But I don't see the meeting rooms listed on the schedule. We're not going to be approving a schedule, a schedule of rates.
It's down at the very bottom on the last page, Mr. Mayor. Party slash events.
Hall rentals?
Yeah. Party slash events, arena meeting room, it says in brackets.
Last item on the page.
It says arena meeting room, and that's the $100. You're just, now, but the briefing note indicates there's two of them.
Yes, there's a meeting room over here at the Spenceville Arena, and then we also have the one at the Ingredion Center.
Okay, so then what is the reference? So there's, there's two of them. So under parties, events, there's two meeting rooms, Ingredion and Spenceville.
Yes.
Now, under hall rentals, what hall are we talking about?
That's the Johnstown Community Hall.
Okay, so that, but again, I'm just looking at the schedule itself so that it becomes a little bit clearer, because above there, you've got Johnstown Community Center Hall, 157 plus HST for event, and then hall rentals for meetings, et cetera. Thirty, so that's the same hall, right?
That is correct.
But for different purposes?
That is correct, yes.
And now, in the, in the discussion that you just had, you indicated that the $100 would apply if, you said, you said if the concession stands were open, but that's not reflected in any way. Did you mean that? Or is the $100 booking fee, whether the concession stands are open or closed? Is it just a straight $100 booking fee?
Well, if it was in the summer, when the canteen wasn't open, then there wouldn't be that fee.
Okay, but how is that, how is that reflected in the schedule? I mean, I took it to mean, I took it to mean that the $100 would apply, I'm looking at page three here, for the arena meeting rooms, that $100 would apply, period. Had nothing, I took it, it didn't have to do with the concession stand. Am I understanding it correctly?
No. And, well, that, I mean, I can make, I can make a change to that. I guess that would be my fault for not indicating that.
So, so is it, is it a seasonal charge or is it strictly based on the hours of operation of the canteen?
Well, the canteen is normally open when the arena is open.
Okay.
So it's just...
So you could specify, you could specify, you could specify that that charge is from month X to Y. Would that, would that do it? Would that satisfy?
Because we do have a couple rentals in the summer for, the people will use the pool.
Yep.
And then they'll use the meeting room at the Ingredion Center.
So what do we, what do we charge in the summer then, when they, what do we charge for the Ingredion room at Cardinal?
They would be charged, they're charged the $30 for the first hour, first two hours, and then $15 after that.
So they'd be charged the hall rental price.
That's correct.
So, so, okay, so just to build that out so that it's a little more clear. And which, and hall rentals would include any, any of our facilities classified as a hall? So upstairs here, or, do we rent this space? Yeah, so this space.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll just, we'll put a pin in that for a second. Go ahead.
Just in terms of the two thousand, we'll start with the other. So parties and events, if we had it, $100 plus tax, if the concession stands are open, and when they're not open, have the rate be like a flat $50 when they're not open, so they're still paying for the room. I'm a little confused about the hall rentals for meetings because sometimes the hall is rented for a meeting and they leave a bigger mess than if it's rented for a dance kind of thing, so...
Sometimes that does happen, yes.
So when I see that hall rentals for meetings, is it just applying to the Johnstown Hall?
No, that's right here, too.
Okay. And the other, on the swimming lessons, I'm wondering if it's a typo for the one child at $130 because it was $40 a session at four, it turns to $120. Is there really no, they're doing three sessions instead of one?
Yes, that is a typo.
Sorry, can you say?
Or, no, sorry.
No? Or am I misunderstanding how that's...
If they join, if they, it's a $10 discount.
So there's three sessions in the summer?
There's four.
Okay, I thought there were three sessions. So this is a three-session of swimming lessons for $130.
That's, there is three, yes. So we're saying if you want, if you take three out of the four, you would get it for that rate.
Okay, but then that's...
That is a typo.
Okay, so it's $120, not $130. Okay.
That's correct.
It's supposed to be $120?
Because forty, it's $40 a session, and if you're, if you're bound up for three sessions, you wouldn't want to pay under 30, would you?
Okay, so we'll have the, uh, so committee will be satisfied with that, um, that correction on one twenty? And, um, to, to put the, the, uh, clarification around, um, the seasonal party and events and the which halls are rented with that?
In the, in the, in the schedule that comes with the file by the end of the month.
Okay.
So maybe you could put the name with the hall and then the cost, and then the hall and then the cost, so it's clear which one you're talking about.
Okay, so it, is, uh, is committee, uh, do we have concurrence? Okay, okay. Um, are there any other, uh, anything else with this item before we call a question? Okay, that's great, so, uh, we have a move on to secondary. All in favor? All opposed? The motion is buried. So the next item is the Cardinal Drinking Water System, uh, MOECP Inspection Report. Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, uh, the summary rating record is, is attached. So there are no, no areas of non-compliance. Um, so, just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of, uh, of our operations staff and support personnel and council.
Okay, thank you for that information. Great writing, uh, any questions?
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna add my, uh, accolades to the staff and, uh, Mr. Grant, Mr. Shaw, and, uh, the people at the, uh, various, uh, aspects of the, uh, Environmental Services. Uh, they, they do a continuous, uh, excellent job. And, uh, the big thing that stood out to me was, uh, two unannounced inspections. Uh, 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 or they were announced, right? And they were in two different days, and, uh, both, uh, zero, everything came back zero, no, non-compliance. Everything zero, uh, you know, out of fourteen, out of forty-two, and so forth, and zero, or five, like it's a hundred percent inspection rate. Just, uh, that's, that's, uh, great, great news. I think it's, uh, speaks well for the people, where they're doing, uh, the work there and also reassuring to our residents.
Absolutely, yes.
It's great, thank you.
Okay. So...
Same sentiment?
Okay, thank you very much. Notting heads all around. So, uh, we'll move on to Edwardsburg Cardinal Industrial Park MOECP Inspection Report. Sir?
Mr. Chair, uh, similar information is provided in, uh, the, uh, no, no areas of non-compliance noted in, in that inspection as well.
Okay.
Similar sentiments?
Okay. Anything further? Okay, thank you very much, uh, for that as well. So the next item is industrial park flow rates and information item. Go ahead.
Uh, I believe this was a request at the, uh, the last, uh, Public Works and Environmental Services Facilities Meeting. So I've provided you the, uh, the breakdown for twenty seventeen and, uh, year-to-date, uh, twenty eighteen with respect to flows and percentages. You will note that in, um, the timeframe of August, September, October, I believe, is, uh, coincides with, uh, the event at one of our industrial facilities where we had, uh, larger than, than, than normal, uh, water flow, um, on, on the water side and, uh, in, into the sanitary sewer system. Other than that, the, uh, the, uh, the flow rates and percentages are, are in line with what we would, would anticipate.
And, um, our purchased or contracted monthly capacity is, uh, is what? In cubic meters?
So for twenty, uh, for twenty eighteen, uh, right now, we're about two hundred and nineteen cubic meters a day, or forty-six percent of our allocated flow.
Forty-six percent?
Yeah. Uh, obvi- obviously, twenty seventeen, we were a little bit higher, fifty-nine percent, but that was due to the, uh,
Right.
the event.
Uh, questions? Debbie, Mary?
Um, just, it, I, I do want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly because I'm seeing the April runoff or the April flow of sixty-four seventy-seven on the tot, in the third column, total cubic meters.
You're, you're one out of us.
No, oh, wait, the back story. Oh, sorry, you're not at that one. I thought you were doing the back story.
This one?
Oh, yes, I did jump. Is it seven now?
That's right.
Yeah. Prescott flow rates, any?
It's right here. So we're on, we're on, uh, industrial park four.
Why, okay, I'll wait till the next one, why?
You'll be first, first in the queue.
Thanks, sir.
Any, anything further? Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, uh, first of all, I read, I guess it's pretty good news. It looks like we've gotten over the hiccup, if I can put it that way, uh, which was, in my, in my opinion, uh, kind of a serious situation. So I have about three questions, if I can, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So, uh, just first as a refresher, uh, back to the briefing note, the second or third sentence in the briefing note. Should quantities exceed six thousand cubic meters per month due to fire line breakage or force majeure, the township will pay a ten percent higher rate on the portion exceeded. Now, is that on a monthly basis? In other words, if we, and I, I know that this is all part of our agreement. I just don't have the agreement clear in my mind, it splits along. So, if we're over the six thousand in a particular month, do we pay the excess on that month, or do we average it out over the year? I forget which it is.
Mr. Chair, we, we pay that, uh, in that month.
In that month?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the first thing I need to get, remember.
And if I, if I made my apologies, I, I was, I was on the sewer side as well, so. My, 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 my response on our quantities were, was incorrect.
Yes, that, uh, that, that answers my, the puzzle book of my face in response, but, uh, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
So we'll, we'll circle back.
We'll circle back to that one.
So, so that's the first thing. Now, then in, in our agreement with Prescott, again, if the twelve-month average flow in a given year exceed eighty-five percent, or in other words, fifty-one hundred cubic meters, the parties agreed to increase the allocation to seven thousand cubic meters per month, subject to available capacity and a one-time contribution. That's the capital, right?
Correct.
And, uh, I think we originally envisaged that it would be on the same rate that we paid for the same, but we, we're not there yet. We're not anywhere near the seven thousand, which gets me to the next question. Um, and I'm going to use names here because we have been talking about names, uh, of the industrial customers for some time now. But our objective at one point was to get Prisbian off the potable water system, uh, to, in, in order to free up more capacity from that potable water system. And our thinking was that they don't really need potable water for their, uh, production facilities. So, my question is, have we made any progress on that initiative? Has there been any discussions with them? Uh, there were, I know at one time, there were some pretty serious discussions going on, and I'm just wondering if now that rates are back to what we would consider more normal flows, have we kind of given up on that idea of trying to get them off that potable water system?
Uh, through the chair.
Uh, I was going to be brave enough to answer.
I, I'm, I'm going to say that since the flows have returned to normal, there's been, uh, less desire on the, the industry's part to, to, to look at an alternative source for, for that supply. We have been providing, uh, um, the, the industry with, uh, regular reports on what their usage is, uh, on a usually, uh, monthly basis. Um, however, there, there doesn't seem to be, uh, much of a desire at this stage.
So through the chair. I can understand, I can understand their point of view. We may have a different one. Uh, I, I, you know, from their point of view, they're back to what I would call normal flows. Um, and of course, we don't see theirs, it's lumped in with these numbers here. But, I guess my question is, I don't recall that as a corporate group that we've made a decision, uh, to kind of, um, give up on that initiative of getting them off that potable water supply. Uh, I can see it works to their advantage to stay on it, because relatively cheap, and they pay us for it. And of course, basically, they avoid the capital costs of putting in another system for their production capacity and their cooling capacity. Um, but I guess, Mr. Chair, through you, I'd like to request that, that we have a discussion about this because from my point of view, I'm, I'm looking to the future, and I don't want us bumping up against that six thousand cubic meters per month, uh, and unless we, well, unless we absolutely have to. And I realize we have some comfort here right now, we're using thirty-six hundred, we've got some, we've got some spare capacity there, but I just don't like pushing it to the limit before we try to do something about it. I think now is the time to be a little bit proactive.
I'm here.
I think they got P. Bearheads.
Okay, go ahead.
A question, a question on this. I can't remember the contracts with them, with the, the companies for water. So if they exceed a certain amount, um, that puts us over, like, are they, do they accept some responsibility for that, for that ten percent surcharge? Does it fall directly onto them? I'm saying...
Yes, we, yes, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, yes, we would pass along those costs to the industrial user. Um, I, I just wanted to remind committee that you may remember that, uh, Prismin did go ahead and drill a well in an effort to get themselves off the potable water system and onto a different supply. And, uh, and then the well water wasn't suitable for their use. So I, I wouldn't characterize it, that, that we've forgotten or set aside. I thi- I think there's desire on both parts, parties, part to move forward with some kind of an arrangement. Um, but the, the arrangement to get them off of the potable water and onto the raw water supply involves work with Greenfield, too. So, we're, it's a three-way discussion, um, because Greenfield currently owns that raw water supply, so.
Well, we own a piece of it.
Yeah, a piece of it, but it's still a three-way discussion. So it's, it's, it's not that people, staff has forgotten about it. It's, it's just, they're a bit complex. And we'll have to restart the discussions with Mr. Edwards and, uh, Ms. Lynn.
Uh, no, I, I guess I'm just making the point that we recognize the fact that it was a three-way discussion with, with Greenfield ourselves and them, and, and we did initiate those discussions at, at the time of the, of the problem. And I think we went some distance down the road. Uh, it's just that I, I'd like us not to lose that initiative.
Okay. Anything else? All right, and so, um, Mr. Grant, you had answered my question in your briefing note, and so that's, uh, I'm, I'm satisfied with sixty-one percent, uh, that you provided, the, uh, you provided committee, right? So thank you very much. Anything else on that? So we'll move on to Prescott Waste Water Treatment Plan Flow Rates, uh, information item. Do you want to speak to that, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I, I guess I did in the previous affirmation item. So I guess if there's any questions, I will, uh, certainly, certainly answer.
So just, uh, to come back to the, the April-May, uh, numbers, um, in twenty seventeen, that was the, uh, the high water. So you have a lot of drinks. Uh, my assumption is that's a lot of water going through the storm drain, or into the drain system for treatment as a result of the weather.
The weather, yes.
And then, um, in April of this year, the number was just a little bit lower than the previous year, and May a little bit more manageable. So it's, it's really, to me, interesting to see the different, the, the way that you show up in the reports and you can sort of understand more what you're seeing when you relate it to what you were trudging through.
Right. Okay, uh, any other comments down here? Uh, Councilor Ralph? Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so, uh, through the chair, then to the treasurer, um, where, where do we stand with regard to twenty seventeen operating? As I read the chart, we're responsible then for paying six point two eight percent of the operating cost of that plan for twenty seventeen?
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
And, and how, have we received an invoice to that effect, or paid an invoice to that effect?
We have not received an invoice to that effect.
That's for twenty seventeen?
Correct.
So, we don't have the invoice? We haven't cash flowed that money, that's still, uh, uh, so that's still a, a payment that has to be made. And in twenty eighteen, if everything continued as it is today, our share of the operating cost would be six point zero six percent. Final number to be determined. But it's determined on the basis of the actual amount at the end of the year, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, has there been any discussion with Prescott as to when we might expect to see that invoice?
Through the chair, we've actually had a, uh, a recent reconciliation of the twenty seventeen, uh, based on their fur, or their financial return, um, information that they sent into the ministry. Um, and that's as far as it's gone, I've seen those numbers, but there's still no invoice for seventeen.
So have we estimated what we should be paying them for twenty seventeen, and are we carrying that as a payable?
Yeah, we did. At the end of twenty seventeen, we booked, uh, an amount for the end and put it as a liability for, as soon as it comes to pay. It's been recognized in the twenty seventeen statements.
Right.
Uh, already, and it's just in a liability account as soon as we receive the invoice.
Okay, so, uh, so at this point, we, we really don't know when we'll see that invoice. It's just that we're at the point where, uh, we're negotiating and agreeing on the basis of the invoice. Is that, got that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to item seven each, and that is road resurfacing cost comparison. And this was requested, um, by committee last month. Any other?
Just, just taken, just, just taken from the last couple of years of, of, of projects, so it's, it, it's probably a wider range, potentially, on the, on the higher end.
So, um, my question is, what is the, because I, I can't speak to your intent of the question, but I guess what we're always looking, what I'm, what I'm always looking to do is, you know, when...
That's why I asked.
Uh, there, that's exactly what I was going to start driving at.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, the cost per longer, you know, so when, if we've got a five kilometer road, uh, how much it's going to cost? So if someone says, "Well, why can't you do my road?", I'd say, "Well, you know what? It's this much, and that equals this much of, you know, the, the total road resurfacing budget for the year, et cetera." And so, um, my question was going to be, uh, what's the, how many square meters is one, you know, kilometer of asphalt? The mayor did some math here, and I gotta take a picture of it.
Well, but, but, but I got, I got help from the Director of Operations because I, I, I know a kilometer is a thousand meters. And I, so my question was, how wide?
How wide, that's exactly right.
So he, he tells me use six point five meters.
Okay.
So I used six point five times a thousand, and I got sixty-five hundred, uh, square meters per kilometer. Then I multiplied each of these numbers by sixty-five hundred, so, but I could get, because I can conceptualize what it costs to do a kilometer. Because we buy it by the kilometer, we don't buy it by the square meter. So, it's very interesting, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could just basically use him some numbers.
Yeah.
So using the low range of numbers, the low range, the single surface or the tar chip is thirteen thousand a kilometer. The double surface treatment, which is tar chip, is twenty-nine thousand two fifty per kilometer. The fog seal over the tar ship is fifty-two hundred per kilometer. And the HL4 High Lift, uh, AC fifty-eight thirty-four, fifty millimeters in depth, is seventy-four thousand per, uh, kilometer. And the partial full-depth removal, uh, melan pulverized, seven thousand per kilometer. depth removal mill and pulverized, 7,000 per kilometer. And the HL4 Patches and Repairs, 182,000 per kilometer. So, and it's taken me a long time to get my head around the fact that there are certain types of treatment for certain types of situations. And one of the things that the new superintendent at the county is trying to educate us, and Mr. Grant is doing his best as well, is to say to us, we have to analyze our road surfaces by not only location and condition and road traffic, a number of other factors to determine what is the most effective way of using the limited dollars available. And that's why we have six different types of treatment available to us. And some of these types of treatment are just designed to prolong life, where others are designed to replace the surface.
And so this number is based on one lane or two-lane one?
No, the centerline kilometers, so the full width of the road, 6.5 meters.
Okay. So just for...
So just so that we're not going down the wrong path, that's simply for surface. So that's 50 mils. That's not base. That's not culvert replacement.
Drainage.
It's not drainage, any of those other factors that are typically put together within a capital project. So that's just surface to surface as best as we could compare apples to apples.
But, excuse me, but through the chair, but in many cases, I think in our last program from 2018, we did a lot of that prep work with our own forces, did we not? Cross culverts?
We did certainly do some with the cross culverts, but we also had some additional base that we had to put in in all of those.
In the contract.
In the contract.
And the ditching, we do some, most of that, or a lot of that ditching ourselves.
With you.
So, anyway, the reason I wanted this is just so that I have these numbers firm in my mind when I see the first draft of a budget.
How many kilometers of unpaved road do we have in the tension?
All right. I will be able to answer that, but...
You can't bring it back next month, unfortunately.
No, that's right. I can't answer that question. So that, we have about 60 kilometers.
60. Does that include roads shared with our neighbors? Or is that 60?
That would include some roads shared with our neighbors.
68. My little road doesn't make how much of that 60 is. So 60. And so might be that I would put in the bonnet of next council is just whatever we can do to encourage the discussion with our neighbors about getting some of those boundary roads addressed, because it might take four years of conversations to get it to happen six years from now. So we just want to pay to pay the road. Okay. Satisfied with that, your worship?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Item 7I is 25 Elizabeth Street, replacement of our own water conditioner. And there is a recommendation here, and that's that committee recommends that council approve the transfer from reserves of $3,458 to cover the reverse osmosis system and water conditioner replacement cost at 25 Elizabeth Street. Is there a need for the motion? The deputy mayor is moving. And is there a secondary intention? I guess.
No. It's the only way I can talk about it.
Going once. Okay. And we have a secondary, and Councilor Ralph. So, Deputy Mayor, as a neighbor, would you like to speak for or against the motion?
Well, I've got some questions. I'm not comfortable with the terminology here. I didn't think it, we accepted responsibility for these. I think that, was that not just a one-time assistance? A lot of these water systems were having that, trying to remember this so long ago, that they were drained, having their water run into the ditches, which was then running into their wells. So almost like a salt, the salt, the soft water was for a number of places. Anyway, this water issue is ages old, and it was even before my time on. So, and I think that the discussion that I remember having 20 years ago on it was that it was a one-time shot. I didn't know that we were accepting full responsibility for these wells onward and upward.
Do we have contracts in place with each of the houses in town?
Assistant Chair, thank you. Yes, there were a number of properties within the Johnstown area where the contamination in the well was somewhat indeterminate. But the MTO actually downloaded the responsibility for those systems, some to the county and some to the township. So we have had responsibility for those systems for a long time. I'm sorry, I don't remember how long ago it was, but it's certainly been a number of years. Over the course of the years, we have drilled wells for some of the, some of the homeowners that were affected, and then we've been to a contract with those folks to monitor the wells for a period of time. And once we were sure that the wells were adequate to their needs, then we dissolved ourselves from the responsibility. And I think that's probably a program that we should pursue so that we can see an end to this program. I think that's the only way to get it to an end. This particular, this particular property, the, the, the work has been deemed to be needing to be done immediately. And I suggested to the director of operations that we prepare a program of well replacement of these, for these homes, over the course of the next five years or so to try and get it cleaned up.
Just...
Go ahead.
Through the chair, and just correct me. It seemed to me, I recalled from a previous meeting sometime ago, that we inherited this responsibility at the time that Highway Two, Queens Highway Two, was divested down to the county. And that at that time, when the MTO was divesting, the county picked up responsibility for a number of properties along County Road Two. And they're paying those costs for those X number of properties along County Road Two. And we inherited these seven, actually, we inherited nine properties. Or did we inherit seven? We drilled two wells. These, are these seven, these seven are remaining on the reverse osmosis system. The other two have gone on to wells. Is that correct?
There are five remaining. Two have gone on to wells.
Okay, so there's five remaining. Two have gone on to wells. So I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, is there any possibility that instead of replacing this our old system, and I know that that's the intent and the wording of the recommendation, and you have a mover and a securer in front of you, but my question is, would we be better off putting that $3,400 towards a well at 25 Elizabeth Street? That would get one more off.
And so to follow, to follow on to the mayor's question, I guess my question is, in what form was the responsibility given to us? Like, how is this, how was our responsibility given to us? Like, in what form was that?
Is yours looked after?
Yeah, and so...
Was it an agreement though?
There was a piece of paper.
Yeah, so I just want...
And I'm relying on my memory, but I believe the piece of paper looks something like ministerial order. It's not an agreement. It's a, here you go.
Right. So, and in that order, does it say that, and should the Culligan sales representative insist that you write them a check for this amount, that you not take alternative means to, you know?
Oh, no, not at all. And in fact, in your past, we have done that, where we've been advised by Culligan that a new system is required. We've had a second opinion, and, you know, we do our diligence. We don't just cut a check based on their demand.
For it to be, and so to follow on, so for it to be immediate, I called on a holiday, we had this conversation the other day, after hours, and I had a well being drilled in my backyard the next day by a local vendor. So I bet you we could get a well in their backyard if they agreed to it before a sales rep or an install rep would be able to get there. So, like, for immediacy, I just...
I'd like to defer that question to the director of operations, because I'm honestly not sure what state, what status we are at with this order.
Okay.
We may not be able to get back out of it at this point.
Thank you, Seattle. What we're at right now is, I have given Culligan go ahead to get what's needed, to get that up. Because one of the items with the other two locations where we did the well is that the well was drilled, and then there was a year of sampling on the raw water side to get a sufficient trend established that the well met the specifications before there was sign-off. So it's not a matter of just drilling well and saying, "That well's yours. See you later." Or, you know, that treatment system needs to remain in effect for at least another year while the well is drilled and those tests are conducted.
Based on a past practice or based on some kind of...
That was based on past practice and giving the owner sufficient comfort that the well over that extended period of time met the requirements.
Sorry. And so, thank you. I don't know if I got your, answered your question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I jacked your question.
Yeah, we got it written in the newspaper.
Okay. Councilor Ralph?
I, we've dealt with this often over eight years. And I remember my comment years ago saying, "How long do the children have to pay for the sins of the father?" and so forth. That was a comment I made back then. And I'm still kind of concerned about this issue. And I, I know, I think it all started, again, going back historically. It was a runoff from County Road 16 of salt, getting into supposedly contaminating the well supplies with salt over supply, over an abundance of salt. And so some people, then it became Ministry of Transportation. I didn't know about the counties and stuff. And then we inherited this problem and so forth. They absolved themselves. We inherited it. I guess I've got some questions. And my, the main question, you know, when I hear this and I think of, you know, the Trump and the Putin collusion and the word collusion, I see things that happen. I see, I guess I'm not a genie, and I can't detect underground aquifers and where the water runs from here to there and so forth. But I find it somewhat suspicious. And some of these homes, where they're located, and how far they are, if somebody just didn't get the idea, oh, geez, you know, and well, the township's doing this and talking to the neighbor, and it all kind of evolved from that, you know. And I guess my thing is, I'm going to read out my comments. "Were all houses assessed in Johnstown property at the same time?" I don't recall mine being done. I was there in '86, so I don't recall that being done. "How were the baselines established?" Or, "Was it through the loudest barking dog?" You know, "The problem was a 16 runoff by the MTO, not the township." "The variety of locations makes one suspicious of neighborhood collusion." Or is it by, or is it the underground aquifers just happened to run sporadically, go through Lisbon, down through Mary, and then somehow to hell, and ended up over into Holly Drive? I don't know how that happened. You know what I mean? I'm not a well or a water expert, but I'm just, you know, and where their hydrological, hydro geological studies have proven the necessity of remediation. Nobody asks that now if Bex were doing something up there. You know, like, I just, I find this thing goes on, and, you know, here we are. Geez, it'd be nice to have my own water system when my tank goes belly up, you know, have it replaced. I just wonder, how long will this have to move on? You know what I mean? Is that, is that well still contaminated? Is it not, does the water not clean up? Or, you know, there must be some, today, the salt supply must, is it still as high as it was back 20 years ago? Or have the rules changed to say that it's a lower rating now is, is more unsafe? I, you know, to me, this, I just find it, you know, continuously going out of drilling wells, replacing water softeners, reverse osmosis, and I guess, geez, hey, the government, the government's giving out plain Santa Claus here, you know? I just, I have, I just have a problem here, you know? Ho, ho, ho. Anyway, please tell me, through the chair, if I made any points here.
Through the chair. And I am going by a little bit of a memory, since when this first came in, I may not have even been born. But I will certainly try.
Am I not a bit bored yet?
So my understanding is that there were surveys conducted in the Johnstown area. Those that filled out the survey and indicated that they had some type of water quality issue, the MTO undertook, I believe it was an isolated area, and the council at the time wanted it extended to the entire Johnstown area. And those that completed that there was a water quality issue, sampling was done. And those that exceeded the ministry level at that time, the end result, these seven locations were provided with a system with no indication that it was a one-time offer with that system. But I would say that it would certainly appear that it was a one-time offer at that time across the board.
And so, one-time offer at that time across the board, not into perpetuity?
For those that exceeded, there was certainly an indication that you would continue to provide them.
In other words, they had, they had one chance to get compensated?
If, yes. If they had exceeded the drinking water standard.
Right. So, and we, if I can go back, because it seems to me that, if I recall correctly, that those people that responded to the survey had reason to believe that their wells had been contaminated beyond usage.
Through the chair, I believe that is correct. And of that person, of the total number of respondents, there was only that, the seven were the only ones that the results came back indicating such.
Messy, messy. Okay. Well, so, without further ado, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? It's carried. Let there be water at 25 Elizabeth Street.
It's turning to the line.
I'm favoring that.
So item 7J, Councilor Ralph has declared a pecuniary interest. And the mayor likes it noted always that of no relation, a saved drain, engineer's report, Madam Seattle, for your comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The report initially was presented, I believe, in August, in August. And committee had some concerns with the drafting of the report. It was not particularly well-worded or put together. So the director of operations has been working with the engineers to figure out with a more clear report. And that cleared up report is before you. The motion in August, do you have that?
The motion in August was to send it on to, as it was.
Yes. So the, the motion in August was to receive the preliminary report and distribute a copy of the report to the owners and direct staff to verify law adopting the engineer's report, forming part of this, you know, Seattle municipal drainage. So we have not done that last step, waiting for a more, a better, a better report.
Okay. Questions from the mayor?
Well, first thing is, I mean, and I wasn't here when the first report was put forward, and I don't want to hold this up at all. But as I was trying to read through this engineer's report and understand the shortcut that had been taken, I was on page, I guess it would be page three, under 3.0, where he talks about history, and then 3.1, original drain, 1924. It says, "A drainage map," and I'm about four sentences down in that paragraph, "A drainage map outlining the original 1924 path of the drain has been attached to this report as appendix B." Well, I'm going to appendix B, and I don't see a map. So I'm at a bit of a loss as to see where the original drain was. Here's the appendix B. There's no, there's no map attached to it. So I can't see what was the original course of the drain compared to the modified course of the drain. So, but as I say, I'm not, I'm not going to hold it up. So, but as I say, I'm not, I'm not gonna hold it up based on that. I know that the, it was August, I think, when, when the recommendation was made to send the Engineers' Report on to the property owners and get on with dealing with the issue itself.
Mr. Clary?
So, so the, the, uh, the drainage course is found in figure one. If you, if you read on, it's attached in this report as Appendix B, and also shown below in figure one. So that would be at the top of page four.
Now that's the original drain.
That is the original drain.
And where's the shortcut?
The shortcut would be.
Is that in figure two?
That's in figure three.
Figure, figure two shows where the, where the abandonment was of, of the drain in nineteen eighty.
So where was it abandoned? At the red line?
At the red, at the red line, uh, to, to, to the west.
At the red line and west. Okay, so that portion has been abandoned.
Correct.
And what's figure three showing me?
Figure three is showing you the, uh, configuration change, where the portion of the drain was filled in and rerouted, uh, north and then east. The, uh, would be a red, uh, would be the red line.
Go ahead.
So obviously the farmer, instead of letting it run across the field, went, went around the field with that red line.
Called the Henderson alteration.
Yes.
All right, so the recommendation was to forward this report on to the, on to the owners, right? The benefiting owners? And then what was the next step?
Uh, in, in order to, uh, break the drain up to date, we have to have it, uh, we have to have it adopted by bylaw, this, this new report.
Okay, and so we have to have the, we have to have the Henderson alteration by, adopted by bylaw?
That's correct.
And we have to notify the property owners before we do that?
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
So the original one as drafted, as received by us in August, went out to that, to the owners, and did that start the clock ticking?
No, no, it didn't blow up.
It did not blow up. We were waiting.
It was like that this committee, well, because it didn't come to council from this committee either.
And that this committee directed it, not sent it out until we have a better report.
Oh, I thought this committee that directed that it go regardless, so that I. That's good to know, because they did not want it.
It was, it was by your, uh, your request?
Yes, but I thought it got voted down.
That's one you won.
That's one I won, okay, all right. I lost that one.
And so, and the, uh, namesake of the alteration then pays for the, uh, professional one?
That is correct.
Okay, so, information received. Uh, item eight, counselor inquiries and notice of motion. Okay, Mayor should forward, your worship?
Just two brief things. Um, spoke to the principals from Seven Three Truck Stop today. They reiterate their plan to get their fuel concession up and running as quickly as possible, but looks like another two-week delay. But he tells me that they will have a full paving, uh, contract underway tomorrow or the next day. And then last, uh, through the Chair, if I could.
Go ahead.
I'd just like the, uh, the CAO to report on the tax sale on Dundas Street.
Uh, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the Chair. The, uh, there was a big lot, uh, uh, committee may remember that there was a fire and it was on Dundas Street, um, sort of, for western, I guess, at Dundas Street on the west. Um, and the, the house was demolished and the lot cleaned up. Um, it then went for tax sale. The tax sale process closed on November seventh with no bids being received. Um, so council will have an opportunity to choose to vest property into the township's name. Uh, we're, we're doing a little bit of work on making sure that there's no environmental concerns that we should be aware of before we make that recommendation. Uh, and then once it's vested into the township's name, it can be either sold under our surplus land sale, uh, bylaw, or, you know, we can keep it, or we can do something else with it. But, um, first thing we have to do is make sure it's appropriate to vest that into the township's name.
Go ahead.
So can we, uh, can we vest and declare surplus at the same meeting?
Oh, I'm sure it is.
From my point of view, Mr. Chairman, just to state this, um, I, I understand the staff's interest in making sure that there are no environmental concerns, but the way I would look at it is, uh, get it into the township's name anyway. And if there are environmental concerns, then we deal with them and add it on to the price of the lot if we ever, uh, attempt to sell the lot. Uh, but get control of it because it's in our, it's in our built-up area. And, uh, you know, this is the piece of property that Habitat for Humanity was really looking to build, uh, dwelling, and they were looking for a lot from us to donate to them. And we showed them several pieces of property in the town. This was the only vacant one, uh, that was actually ready to be built upon, but we couldn't find an owner anyplace. Uh, no hard, not, or how hard we looked, we could not contact the person whose name was on the deed. So, I mean, I guess that would explain why, uh, when it went up for tax sale, nobody responded to bid on the tax sale, nor were the taxes paid. So my interest is getting it into the town, getting it vested to the township and then declaring it surplus and hopefully letting it go to be developed.
Does Habitat for Humanity still have that interest?
They have two projects underway right now, neither of which are in our township. Mr. Cameron may know where they're built.
They still are interested, yes.
I'm sure, I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're always interested.
I'm, 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 I'm sorry, the, the question was, I believe Landsdowne is one, is one location that they're building now at, at, as we speak.
Yeah, and they're, and they're always gonna be intent, because I spoke to, uh, one of their directors at some point, and they're always gonna be very focused on Cardinal for our municipality for servicing. And, uh, I think their program is tremendous, so.
And, and, and their preference was to build in Cardinal prior to Landsdowne, but that didn't happen.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
No.
Questions? Counselors-elect, Mr. Clary?
No.
No closed session? Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And all in favor? That's carried.